Good evening, welcome to the Beverly Hills Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting for this Valentine's Day 2023. To kick us off, we have some special guests to start our meeting for validity. Principal Bugby, you can introduce them.
Good evening, School Board and Beverly Hills community. When Dr. Breggy invited Horace Mann to be the hosts for Valentine's Day, I thought there is no place I would rather be on Valentine's Day than here with you all. So, thanks. Okay, here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance are two fifth graders from Horace Mann, Eve Davis and Jessie Sappadin.
Please stand, put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Beverly Hills Unified School District, Beverly Hills Unified School District's mission and vision.
Mission statement: The mission of the Beverly Hills Unified School District is to inspire and enable each student to achieve academic excellence and meet the goals of college and career readiness.
Vision: Through a safe and supportive environment, every student will engage in a rigorous and enriching quality education and will be prepared to thrive in a complex, changing world.
The BHUSD community pledge: The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment.
Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty.
Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion.
Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school and community members and...
Honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property.
By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you, Mr. Bugby. Need a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Before we begin, Dr. Breggy has a message.
Thank you. With heavy heart this evening, as we are gathered together again as a school community, desperately trying to understand that yet again, we are faced with another school tragedy that was preventable. A gunman opened fire Monday night, killing three students and injuring five others in a Michigan State University shooting. Another constant reminder, we can never take for granted the community in which we live and work. Senseless acts of violence do not discriminate. Please join us in a moment of silence as we remember, reflect, and honor the lives that were lost and the victims that are recovering from this trauma.
Thank you, Dr. Breggy. Your report of closed session?
President Marko, there was no action in closed session this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to teacher spotlight. It's my pleasure to roll out the latest episode of Now No One Knows. This past one, I got to speak and learn from high school geometry teacher Courtney Scott, who we shot so much material because she is so infectious about her topic. And we just went on and on as she was teaching me, and I kept learning and learning. And I went to edit this, and I'm like, this is going to be a National Geographic special by the time I'm done. So I did have to cut it down. Breaks my heart because there was so much more that I learned after what you're going to see. Ricky, are you ready? Okay.
Welcome to Now No One Knows. Today, I am with high school geometry teacher extraordinaire Courtney Scott. Ms. Scott, thank you for having me in your classroom. It's so exciting to be back in high school math. I'm not nervous at all. I welcome this into my already convoluted brain. Tell us a little bit about something that nobody knows about you.
I'm a math teacher, but I also am helping out with the theater department. So some people know that, but not a lot of people do.
To add or not to add, right?
That is the question.
That is the question.
We're going to talk about some things that we may know. So that triangle, do you happen to know what kind of triangle it is?
I think it's an equilateral.
Yes, it is an equilateral triangle. Each side of the triangle is 10 inches. So we've got 10, 10, and 10. I want to see if you can find the height.
Well, the base of that triangle that we're trying to find the height for is 5.
Okay. How do you know it's 5?
From half of 10, because you've split the triangle down the middle.
So we're splitting this?
Right.
To picture a right triangle.
Right. And what I'm trying to remember is a squared the 10, b squared the 5, and that would equal 15 squared.
For the right triangle, we want to do the leg squared plus the leg squared equals the hypotenuse squared.
Okay, so it would be then 5 squared plus b squared equals 10 squared?
Now, I noticed that you may have gone out of the order of operations when you added those first two together. So when we do order of operations, we want to square these numbers first.
So it'd be 25 and 100?
Yeah, all right. So now our goal would be to find that height.
Subtract 25 from both sides, b squared equals 75, but then you have to find the square root of 75.
Right, which is why you have the calculator.
Square root of 75 is ahead of the hat. What place would you like me to round to?
Let's do 3.
That's 8.66.
So that is our height. Now, just for funsies, let's change. So I still want you to find the height, but let's say instead each height is 12 inches.
Okay.
What did you get for the subtraction when you did? 144 minus 36?
How do you know I did 144 minus 36?
Because I can see it.
108.
Okay, perfect.
My final answer is b equals 10.392.
Perfect.
Ooh!
That's pretty much it.
This is great, because now I feel like I could do more. Like, what's next? Although we don't have time today.
Right.
But I feel like I could write, math doesn't scare me as much anymore. Thank you very much, Ms. Scott.
No problem.
And now, no one knows.
We went on to do multiple triangles and discussed triangle inequality theorem, which I didn't even know was a thing, but that's a thing. Oh, yeah, I'm a smart guy here. And it just, I just kept learning and learning and being refreshed, but also learning new stuff because math isn't taught the same way now as it was, you know, 10 years ago when I learned it. But it was such, it was such a joy to be in a classroom where somebody's passionate about what they're teaching. And that, I think, is really the crux of a successful learning environment, is to have teachers that are passionate, because it gets infectious and then you become passionate about learning as well, as they are about teaching. Thank you for sharing, everybody. New one coming on February 28th. Moving on, consent calendar. I know we were pulling...
I'm going to pull C, D, and H.
C, D, and A. Anybody else? Pulling from consent? Nope. Okay. So I'll just make the motion to approve the consent calendar minus items C, D, and H.
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's look at item C. Can I get a motion for a discussion?
I'll make a motion for approval of grade 6 through 12 Spanish and French textbook adoption.
I pulled this item.
I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Marcus and Mrs. Wells.
I pulled this item because I got some comments from the community parents and one that was addressed to me about the participation of the parents and possibly board members on the selection of this particular textbook series. And I said that I would like Dustin to explain, because I want you to get the answer.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. So following our current board policy and a code for adoption, we ultimately, and I'm going to say this, only have to actually invite teachers. However, in BHUSD, by practice, we choose to invite our community and our Board of Education, which we actually started that practice about six years ago. I did, we did as a cabinet invite the Board of Education on January 27th to participate for the French and the Spanish adoption, in addition to reaching out to both site levels, BVMS and BGHS. Outside of that, what I do want to call attention to is there is actually only three publishers that are actually approved by the state of California. So unlike other subject areas where we would really be vetting out laundry lists, such as elementary math that we will be getting to shortly, or in previous experience, social studies and science, we only have three vendors left in the game in the world language arena. So of those three, we did see all three vendors come in. We had every single Beverly Vista, BGHS teacher in attendance in both Spanish, French, myself, even our instructional technology coaches to ensure that the digital platforms could be utilized on our devices. I will be honest, I relied heavily on our content specialists because they do not speak Spanish, nor do I, well, I tried French. And so I did have to rely heavily on them, but we did not have any volunteers. After that fact, we did send out to the full 6th through 12th grade parent population, regardless if they were enrolled in Spanish or French. They received the digital links for both the French and the Spanish for open feedback. And again, that's another one of those practices that we like to do within Beverly Hills, is provide the full community an opportunity to reach out directly to me with any feedback on either the French or the Spanish, even though we're recommending to adopt from the same publisher. I only received one email, and that was from a parent of a Spanish 3 student who said they were excellent resources and that could we implement them this year instead of waiting for the implementation of the 23-24 school year?
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Any comments or questions on this item?
I have one comment. Thank you very much for explaining that. I really appreciate it, because I got a couple of questions myself about questioning whether or not the board, our parents, were involved. And so I really appreciate you clarifying that. And the only thing I would add is maybe to throw out to our board, if, and I had a brief discussion with this, with Dr. Breggy, if we perhaps would want to consider making policy around that, that we have a set number of board members and/or parents on every adoption as a board policy, not just as a practice, so that then we would actually have to make certain that two board members or one board member commits to attending, so that we always have a board member part of that. So I don't know what you guys think. Maybe we could add that to a board policy discussion for going forward.
We can certainly add that for discussion. Thank you, Mrs. Wells. Mrs. Manager.
Thank you so much. Just wanted to share that. Thank you for the process explanation, and thank you for sharing the links with me, which I did have a chance to review. And I am fluent in Spanish, because I went to Beverly High. And it looked great, and I appreciate it. And I just was curious to know, so what happened to the "avanzamos"? That's no longer a thing, and now we do "sendemos"?
Yes. And so the textbook company notified us in early fall after we had made our workbook purchase for this current school year, that they were discontinuing it. And so that basically shut us down. And so that's where we were. If you look at the CDE website, there now is only those three options left. And so that's, we, I think, picked definitely the best from the teacher feedback. However, there, there isn't, it's not very lucrative area for textbook companies anymore.
And then, I think when you and I spoke separately, you mentioned the teachers were unanimous. And then, I think when you and I spoke separately, you mentioned the teachers were unanimous?
Correct. Both in French, so the three French teachers of the district unanimous vote, plus the instructional coaches from adaptability and rostering. And then also the Spanish, we have seven teachers in the Spanish side and the instructional coach. Yep.
Mrs. Marcus, any comments?
No, I thank you for that explanation because I too got several comments. And I just wanted to clarify that there had been an opportunity and just to make sure that there was that in the adoption series.
No, no comments.
Thank you, colleagues. Just before we go to a vote, I would comment that I have served on several textbook committees, both as a teacher in LA Unified and then here as a board member. I'm glad I wasn't asked up for this one because I'm not an expert or nor could I even judge the quality of foreign language instruction. You know, it's foreign to me. But, and I did learn Spanish at Beverly and I did pretty good for a while. I had a good run until I kind of stopped speaking it. So I could understand the value of board members sitting on textbook committees for almost an oversight of the process, but our expertise is going to be limited. So I think if we talk about that, Mrs. Wells, it should be within certain parameters of what we could lend to that environment.
I agree. The same with parents, having one or two parents or however we would want to open it up. I just think it's, from a community standpoint and feeling that it's transparent, the adoption of the textbooks, that they're able to see the presentations from the publishers and be a part of that process, knowing that, of course, we're deferring to our experts in terms of really ultimately making that decision. But being able to be part of that process, I think, is important for parents and to know also that the board's represented.
Okay, thank you.
One additional thing, Noah. I also have sat on the science and the math so far this year. So, or in the last couple of years, so I have been on them. And as you said, I would not be able to lend anything to a Spanish or French because it's not my language, so.
Right, but if it at least provides some sort of oversight that what Mrs. Wells is saying, at least if there's eyes on the process, not necessarily to opine specifically on the content. I think that's where our importance could lie. Okay. I was going to vote on it, but all right. You want to drag this thing out? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And to Mrs. Wells, and I'm just offering up an opportunity, is it may be beneficial too if I had an opportunity to do an ed services update around the process. I think some of our parents or community members don't understand that there is a vetted-out rubric for each of the texts for those that have sat on committees. You know, there is an adopted list from the state that's already been vetted prior to that. So I think understanding that process too might be beneficial for our community, that it isn't just, let's watch the vendors. It's not only do we have to answer a series of rubric questions, but we have to make sure that it's adaptable to our systems and stuff like that. So I just wanted to add that piece.
Yes, it is a respectfully tremendous amount of work that goes into vetting out a series. So I appreciate that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. Item D, I'll make a motion for the approval of the master contract with Autism Treatment Center.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. And I believe, did you have a question on that?
Yes, I do have a question on this. This one is kind of confusing because the contract is for $150,000 and will cover February 2023 through the end of the month, through the end of June. And yet, is this a year and has the student been there already? Or is this just for one student? Or is there, it's not clear what this is all about and I have not had it. And I just have trouble with something that I don't think is made clear enough for me.
So I can speak to that and I know that Ms. Collins-Williams is here. So, you know, the residential placement for our students, where our students have to live in the facility, there's a requirement that you pay the full year to be able to attend the facility, even if you come in in the middle of the year. This is a student that is leaving BHUSD at this time to be placed in a residential facility.
So we're paying for the whole year just because whether they've taken the half year or not?
Yeah, you do have to pay for the full year. And then there's some, it depends on the different facility, but some facilities have a program where you begin to step down, you begin to work yourself back, and some of those funds could be used for that. It depends on where you're being placed.
Okay, I have a question about this now about, and I don't know if this should be then enclosed. I'm not sure.
Well, and Ms. Collins-Williams is here too, so she can, if you want to jump in, if I've missed something, please feel free to...
Well, I just want to know if this is something that we can anticipate every year?
Yes.
There, Mrs. Marcus, in this fact that...
You can't hear her.
He can't hear you.
Sorry, I don't have the sound yet with you.
And so, but to answer your question, it is something we can always anticipate every year because the IEP placement will provide that direction and support that's what's needed for that student. And that could happen at any time.
Yes, thank you. Now we can hear you.
Okay, thank you so much. Dr. Bregy is correct. The IP does dictate the placement of the student. Generally, we have, we tend to have anywhere between five to eight students who are in this type of placement, as this is the most restrictive placement. But they do change. As Dr. Bregy indicated, we work very hard to have a step-down program and be able to bring them back to district or step them down to a lower level of restriction or less restrictive environment in placement. However, when the IEP team determines that this particular placement is required, we are required by law and ed code to fund it. The reason we have to do, we have to fund for the whole year is because we don't know how long the student will need the placement, even though they're going now in February. We don't know if they'll need to continue into the next year and we can't have a break in treatment for the student. We do review these placements every six months and try to see if they're ready to start moving back towards a comprehensive campus. But in order to make sure we have a comprehensive program and a cohesive program for the student, we do contract for the year. It is billed on a monthly basis, so we never pay more than we actually use, but the contract is in place to support the child.
And just for clarification, is it the year moving forward or is it the school year?
So, that's a very good question, President Margot. It's the year going forward, but remember in special education, extended school year or what we would return summer school is also part of the regular year. So that's the school time during June and July that they are in school and they receive support and services. We have to cover those as well. So it's this current school year plus extended school year, and then we will review the placement to see whether or not the student is ready to return. If not, then we would continue into the next school year.
The student is exited from the program, let's say in October, then do we continue to get billed?
Do you want homework? And then we...
More billing after that?
No, we only, we're billed actually in a rear. So if they were to attend in October, we would pay for it in November.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Questions, colleagues?
Hi, good evening. $150,000 just sounds like it's the higher end of the range. I mean, I, you know, over the last couple of years, I know things have increased. You know, the need for placement has increased for sure, but usually it seems like the general range is, you know, maybe up to $100,000. So I don't know how, you know, 150, how we arrived at that. Is that negotiable or that's just the price right now?
So, Dr. Stern, you are correct. Prices have increased. Facilities are also feeling the impacts of inflation and everything else. But there is a range. And I would say actually the $150,000 is kind of in the middle to the low side now. We are seeing placements actually charging anywhere from about $120,000, $130,000 up to almost $400,000 a year. So it really depends on the needs of the student. And this process, these placements are vetted through a very extensive placement process, and the student is matched with the facility that best meets their needs as determined by the IEP team. So this particular facility was matched with this student based on their needs, and they do have some pretty significant needs.
And then also, with that price, is there wraparound services provided? In other words, if the child were to re-enter a general education setting at the school, are there services that are provided that are included with that price tag to facilitate that? Should the child re-enter the school system?
So, let me clarify your question. You're saying when they return or if they were to go into a general education setting while they're in placement?
Well, no, if they were to return, let's say to our general education offering or our campus, so whether it's special ed or not, but our campus, would there be wraparound services or some sort of facilitation to bridge that gap since they're going from a very restrictive setting to a more generalized open setting?
Okay, I understand your question now. The contract that is before the board tonight is for the residential treatment only. If we determine that they are ready to then start a step-down program and return to a comprehensive campus, the IEP team would then determine what the student needs and we would then provide those services either through district personnel or through contracted non-public agencies that we work with in addition. But no, the $150,000 covers their room and board at the facility as well as a non-public school placement while they're at the facility and all of their related services, including counseling and therapy while they're there.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else? Okay. We'll take a vote. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Item H, make a motion to approve the agreement with Everhard for roof repair services.
I'll second.
I'm going to give that to Mrs. Wells. It really was a neck and neck.
Yeah, thank you. The contract price is $25,000. Is this in advance that we're putting this money aside for possible repairs? Or have we already made repairs? And the other question, if there were repairs, does any of this fall under possible insurance coverage due to the recent rains that we had?
Thank you, Ms. Marcus. And first of all, good evening to our board president, our board members, community members. Yes, so to answer your question, so we did have some events because of the recent rains and wind that created some roofing issues. So we are, this request is for roof repair services to help us with these types of concerns that we have currently. So it's for, we haven't started the work on these, but it's for work that we'll, we need to get started on very, very soon to avoid any further damage. So in regards to your question about insurance, though, so the insurance, we looked into it, it wouldn't cover the rain issues. It would cover, so for instance, if a tree fell on the roof, that'd be a different scenario. But this is just the rain. And so because of that, then we have to go in and look at it. And we do have several sites that we have to look at that need some of these repairs. Now, just mind you, this is, we believe that that's going to be somewhere around, it probably would be less than that. But if there is a major repair that's identified, we would bring that back to the board for approval for a major type of repair.
So this is, this is an estimate of what you think it's going to cost to repair damages that we see so far based on your first observations?
Yes, yes, based on the first observations of our maintenance team, this is what we believe will be needed. Again, if we do start looking and they come out and they realize this is a much bigger need, then we will make sure to bring that back to the board.
And one other question, and I have, have we used this company before?
I believe they've used this company before, yes. Yes, in the past.
I have a question. Does this include the swim gym and the leaks in the swim gym of late?
Yes, some of the leaks in the swim gym will be addressed by this.
Did we not just replace or redo the roof at the swim gym recently? That it's not covered under warranty?
No, I'd have to get back to you on that. I'm not, I can't recall us recently replacing...
I don't recall either. I know when they did the swim gym repairs, I didn't know if they did the roof at all. No?
No, I don't think so.
Well, that answers my question.
Okay, that's going to help us. And again, if we do see that it's a bigger issue, we would have to bring it back to you all for that specific project.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions, colleagues? Thank you. All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the wonderful Alex Botten.
Okay, so for my report today, starting with some of the things that have been going on at Beverly for the last two weeks. First, we have the Dance Company Show, which was the first few days of February, which was amazing as always, and I hope everyone had the chance to go see it. Congratulations to all the dancers, especially the seniors who are graduating. And thank you so much to Ms. Finley and the entire Dance Company. And then also, the last two weeks have been a lot of fun with many of our BHHS athletic teams qualifying for CIF. I hope this is all the teams. I know there were many. So congratulations to all the teams, I know for sure. Boys basketball, wrestling, boy soccer, girl soccer, and girls' basketball all made it to CIF. And a couple of them, multiple rounds. And I will update on that when I know more information. And now what's going on at Beverly currently and in the upcoming weeks. First, yesterday, KBEV and Normanade hosted a podcast. This is the third episode of the third season of Normanade's Make Today Well-Lived podcast. And they had Lily Bossi, our mayor, as their guest. And she joined Normanade Peer Counselors to discuss the values of inclusion and diversity, how her initiatives are creating a new sense of community in Beverly Hills, and to explore the active roles that students can take to cultivate greater kindness and allyship in BHUSD. And thank you so much, Colby, for sending me these photos. And the episode airs February 22nd. And then in ASB, this week is also very hectic week. Today is the second day of our Valentine's Day Spirit Week. I was wearing pink earlier today. I just don't have it on right now. And everything is leading up to our winter formal, A Night in Paris, on Thursday night. And then also, throughout the month of February, we have more fundraisers going on. We have a Prince Street Pizza fundraiser for the class of 2025, February 21st. A Shake Shack fundraiser for the ASB on the 21st as well. And then the French Club, which I am a part of, is having a Mardi Gras themed bake sale on February 21st and 22nd. And all the proceeds will be going to Doctors Without Borders. And then, just from a little, some other parts of campus, our annual BHHS Career Day is coming up. And for those of you who don't know what that is, business professionals from around the city join BHHS students and kind of share with students about their profession. And it's a very, very, very interesting event and a lot of fun. And the Career Center and DECA help organize the event. So, and I know that Ms. Dubin is still looking for more adults and business professionals to come and any career experience that you have, any field, we would love to have you. So you can email Ms. Dubin at that email on the screen. And then finally, something that was just brought to my attention, that I have a lot of friends who are in the Medical Science Academy. And thank you, Colby, and I know Ms. Lynch, for sending me these photos. But a program here at Beverly that we have that not a lot of people know about or don't know a lot of the details about is our Medical Science Academy, which is truly incredible for students who want to pursue careers in healthcare, medicine, and any of the sciences really. And these are a couple of our photos. So there are three levels of the academy. The first level is the Intro to Medical Science that starts in sophomore year. The Biotechnology Class, which is usually junior year class. And then the Biomedical Innovations Class, which is a senior year class. And in the Biomedical Innovations Class, many of my friends, who are in it, they go and they have what are called simulation labs, where they go to see their sinai and get immersive experience in the healthcare field. And you can see them, I think, here, they're learning how to take blood pressure, give CPR, and they learn so much more. And then in this photo right here, we have our students in the biotech class who do a lot of things with genetic engineering and I think they make antibiotics. I don't have all the details about the class, but hopefully I will bring a student who knows more about it from MSA soon. Because I think this is a program that I think a lot of people don't know about. Because I think this is a program that I think a lot of people don't know about, but that's all. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you very much, Alex. Does anybody have any questions or response?
I want to thank you for your presentation and congratulations to our sports teams and all of our student athletes. It's really fantastic results this year. And I love this Medical Science Academy and we're so fortunate to be partnered with Cedar Sinai Hospital, which has, you know, been just rated the number one, I think, hospital in the country, one of the, one of the number one hospitals in the country. And perhaps no, you want to do what no one knows with the Medical Science Academy.
They are all aware and people are now coming out of the wood of work wanting to do it. So it just depends on the teacher's availability and you're thinking of, a lot of, a lot of teachers are just being so generous with their prep time and stuff to be able to sneak this in. Takes about 30 minutes.
Well, it'd be great to have more exposure for this program. I think it's really fantastic.
I know Colleen well.
Such an opportunity for Beverly Hills.
Sorry, anybody else? Sorry.
Alex, I love your updates. Thank you so much. It really gives us an impression of the vibe and the exposure and the opportunities. I really, thanks for your time.
Thanks again, Alex, for a great report as usual, right on target for so many things and to bring things that we might be more interested in at this time that we haven't thought about. So that's it. And you did bring to mind the Career Day and I have a nephew who's an architect and I think I used him and he's going to see about, he reminded me that maybe he'd like to do it again. He really enjoyed it the last time. So thank you again for a great report.
Thank you, Alex. And I really liked the red scheming, of the color scheme. That looks really good.
That's, that's.
Oh. But wait, didn't you have red before? All right, forget it. Okay, sorry. Forget that.
She, she had the pre-approved correct orange color. I don't know if this red's been approved.
This is El Rodeo red. So this is approved through all of our branding guidelines.
I wanted to, I'm glad that you mentioned the success of the, of the sports teams that made it to CIF. And I'm really happy to hear especially that the wrestling team is doing well and thriving. And I know that at that particular recent tournament, that some of the wrestlers really did a very phenomenal job. So I'm happy to hear that. So thank you for sharing.
Thank you once again, Alex. And, and I know, I think most of us saw the Dance Company Show. I'm not, I don't want to speak for everyone, but I'm pretty sure everyone saw it. It was phenomenal and looking forward to the next performing arts extravaganza.
Dr. Bragg. Yeah. Also just thank you. I love the spotlight on MSA. We often do that, but hearing that from a student perspective is really encouraging. So thank you for adding that. And with that, I will transition into my own report and just happy Valentine's Day. There are a lot of great things happening throughout the district, so I look forward to sharing many of those things with you tonight. Very special event at BBMS. Ms. Castanon in the audience is aware of this as well, that there were many helpers there between nutrition and lunch, and they put over 800 Valentines up all over the school in the courtyard area there. And every student and every staff had their name on one of those Valentines, and it was something positive about them. So it's great to tie in Valentine's Day with also Kindness Week, but what a great progressive gesture at BBMS. As you know, Black History Month is a national observance each February, and we get this opportunity to acknowledge the contributions of Black Americans. Each year during Black History Month, we recognize our responsibility as a school district to learn more about people and places and events that aren't always in the instructional materials that we have. It's a founding principle in education that learning involves making mistakes. Proud to say that we've learned many mistakes as we continue to learn as a school district. And there's a quote from Maya Angelou that comes to mind when it comes to learning, as we continue to learn and grow as a school district. And that quote is, "Do the best you can until you know better, then you know better, then do better." Black History Month for our secondary schools. And I just want to share with you that, that I join many people when I say that when we celebrate Black History Month in February, that it really shouldn't be in one month, that this should be embedded throughout our entire curriculum, throughout our school year. And I just want to take a moment to just share with you some of the many things that are happening in our school district. Normanade, as an example, is highlighting the importance of understanding one's identity and they're recognizing Black History Month and teaching our students about allyship. And you've heard about allyship before from previous presentations and how you can be an ally to marginalized groups. In the spirit of learning, we continue to expand our knowledge at the elementary schools. On this slide, you're going to see several examples and highlights from Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Fuhrer, Mrs. Arabello, Mrs. Morganstern. And our students are not only learning during their class time, but they're also learning from their specialist subjects too. And you can see on this slide, if you remember Ms. Graham, and she was here and she did a spotlight for us at our last meeting. She is working with our third and fourth graders currently, and they're making their own modernized recreations of famous historical paintings using Kahinde Wiley's process. And he's a contemporary artist. And we're looking forward to seeing some of the results and some of the outcomes from what our students create. Here are just a few snapshots, some of the initiatives at our school. The bottom right-hand bulletin board that you see there was created by Ms. Croft, BBMS English teacher, who is recognizing influential Black artists, athletes, inventors, scientists, musicians, authors. And for more information about what's happening in our schools, be sure to keep your eye on some of the weekly newsletters that come out. I've talked to you a little bit before about the cabinet chats that we're doing. We, we finished our last two schools. This is a Hawthorne visit and just how incredible it's been to be able to talk to our staff, have conversations with our staff, and then also be able to be in our schools, walk through some of our hallways. I was able to find somebody wearing the same sweatshirt that I was, which was a great twin day picture. And it was just a great opportunity. You can see on the left-hand side, we were able to meet and talk with Mrs. Anderson's class and have a conversation with many of the fifth graders. The next slide, just, we had a Horace Mann visit. So Mr. Bugbee, who was here and did the spotlight that kicked us off today, you can see there's a picture here. We had a great opportunity, not only doing the cabinet chat, and it was crazy here today. So if you see some of that going on. But we had an incredible display. This was like the entire length of the hallway in the main building. And you've heard about the project before, but it was the display of butterflies in remembrance of the Holocaust. And it was quite a sight to see. And so we were able to tour that in person. You know, a real highlight for me so far this year has been through our re-configuration, watching the support that's provided and given to our students from our staff. This was an activity, you can see it's from Bulldogs to Normans, where the, the staff came to the middle school, they had an opportunity, and it was administration, it was teachers, they were able to talk to eighth graders about their programs, about options to sign up, just all kinds of different exciting things that an eighth grade student might not know what's waiting for them across town. And they had an opportunity to be able to do that from music to academic programming to theater and drama. And it was just a great opportunity to be able to kind of bring a mini pieces of the high school to the middle school to share what's awaiting our eighth graders. I also had to throw in Dance Company because you should know, just a big supporter of our program and the work that Ms. Finley does. I want to add something to what's really unique about our programming. The following week after the Dance Company production, Victoria George, who is the BBMS dance teacher, she walked 30 students from the middle school to the high school and they had an opportunity then to meet with the high school class. And, and that's really important. This, this, this vertical articulation that we have is not just about academics and programming, but it's about relationships too. And these two teachers working so closely together to establish a really clear pathway from middle school to high school. So we had the opportunity as a leadership team the first time to be able to, as a full team, take a tour of El Rodeo and also of, at the high school, B3, B4. And it was just a great opportunity for us as a team. And if you think about us all representing different responsibility areas from, you know, from security to technology to academics and just, you know, general education, special education, we, we had an opportunity as a full team to be able to walk in and out of the entire facility and begin to connect some of our responsibility areas before things were done, before things were put into place, before plaster was put up. You know, in the spirit of let's get it right the first time, let's make sure that we are all talking, all communicating, and all sharing the possibilities. And so we were excited to do that. And then we're also very excited on March 7th, we're going to meet with our Board of Education and share with you the room usage that we have so that you can get a better idea of knowing, you know, where's the third grade hallway, where's the fifth grade hallway, where's the music room going to be? Because I really think that that's important, that people start to get an idea of kind of the layout of what we're putting in our new construction. So as a team, we look forward to sharing that with the board and the public, how we're using the new spaces in our construction. This is just a shot of El Rodeo, which is just absolutely gorgeous and really moving along quickly. Last week, we had our elementary math professional development at the district office. UCLA experts led our teachers in the exploration of our mathematical practices. And you can see some photos here of our teachers that are working together and they are engaged in dialogue and in, in, in teaching practices from different grade levels. And it was just a great opportunity in a room that we gave a fresh coat of paint to and some decals and really gave a different culture in this particular classroom. It's the one classroom that we have that we use for staff development and it was nice to get feedback from educators that were really taking care of this space. So that was kind of a fun opportunity. Just last week, I know that I attended the Hawthorne Gala. This was Saturday night with Mrs. Manicherry and Mrs. Wells and the entire Hawthorne crew, Pia. This was, the president at Hawthorne did such a great job. You know, there are a lot of people to thank that could put and pull off an event at the Beverly Hilton that had a variety of entertainment options and great food and great fellowship with a really great auction, silent auction with all kinds of things. So we had a great, great evening. And so a shout out to Hawthorne for really doing it right. Just a quick update on the Conheim, and we've been talking about the Conheim a lot. And, you know, it's really important to be able to share publicly the decisions that are being made at a board level so that people can start to see how these decisions do make an impact with our students and our staff and including our JPA partners who use this facility. Many of you may not know this, but you know, these facilities are used early in the morning, sometimes six, 6:30 in the morning till 11 o'clock at night. And that's through the robust partnerships that we have in our community. And this is seven days a week. If you don't live close by and you can't hear, it is, you will hear that buzzer seven days a week. We've really moved ahead with emergency procedures and, you know, special shout out to Mr. Bede, Ms. Starkins. What are the areas of feedback that we receive from staff is that the grab and go kit was there, but having those materials when you are in a crisis moment is not to be assumed that everybody is going to know exactly what to do in the right order. And so we had received a lot of feedback from staff that they want to have just a, like a cheat sheet, just something to follow, something to grab. And when you are in a crisis situation, the last thing that we want you to do is spend valuable time trying to figure something out. And so this is a, this, this took some, a lot of time because Ms. Starkins incorporated the feedback of so many staff members and really came up with something that I think is really pleasing to everybody. And so this is a huge addition to get it right, to be consistent, and to give the confidence to our staff in knowing what to do and what order to do it. So that's been a big advancement and I thank Mr. Bede and Ms. Starkins for that. Yesterday, we had two panels of community members, alumni, parents, board members, and it was facilitated by two of our cabinet members, Dr. Horvath, Mr. Seaman, for the interview process for the Beverly Hills High School Principalship. Those interviews happened yesterday. They conducted their interviews, seven candidates. We've moved three on. I am not part of that first round for transparency, but look forward to jumping into the second round. This is incredibly important hire decision. And so I look forward to beginning the interview process tomorrow with the three candidates that we have moved forward. It's a very comprehensive interview process. The three candidates will be spending three hours each with us with various groups and stakeholders and students are involved. So it is a very comprehensive day. It's an exhausting day, but it's, it's really a day where we can challenge one another to engage in stepping away from that, just the interview process and having an engaging conversation about instruction. And so each candidate will be expected to do that, and I look forward to that. Finally, I'm, sorry, there's a little bit of a delay. I don't know why I was doing that, but Professional Development Day. We do not get this opportunity very often as a school district to have a Professional Development Day. It is this Friday. I did talk a little bit about it before my last report. And this is an opportunity, it's our first opportunity actually since before COVID, for us as a entire large school district to be able to meet and have our professional development where our staff can make selections based on the programming that we have. We also have 20 vendors that are coming as well. And there will be over 35 sessions that BHUSD staff members can choose from to attend other sessions by BHUSD staff. Coming Soon is a very large project that the Horace Mann PTA has been working on with their administration there, the district office. And it's, it's a very exciting opportunity as far as improving our, just our school environment and also utilizing some of the resources that we have in our school district as well as some fundraising. And it's been a real collaborative combination of us all working together. And so it, it, it really does transform the entire property at Horace Mann when we show you kind of the long-term vision. And so we hope to bring you that at our next board meeting. I think you're going to be really impressed with this model where the PTA has reached out to the administration at both the site and the district office. So we look forward, there's some great work happening here and it's going to be an exciting new look for Horace Mann. So I also want to update you a little bit about where we are with the mural. I've had an opportunity to speak to a lot of board members and I think this is an opportunity. There were lots of questions that were asked about the policy and about how to handle requests for bureaus. And I, and I do get And I, and I do get that that's a very small print, but I want you to see that really the only part that's addressed to murals is the very bottom portion of that. And there's just a few items that are real general in nature. And so with our new construction and with our long-term planning, we want to make sure that we're putting murals in the right places where our construction is not going to interfere. And we want to make sure that we have all the questions asked about the, the long-term nature of the project. It also incorporates some of what's happening in the district with banners and signs. And it's really been severely outdated. So at this time, kind of like what Mr. Seaman talked about, Mrs. Wells talked about this as far as the textbook adoption and where we are with our policy, it's, it's often a good practice to go back to your policy. And if you've been watching our meetings over the last six months or so, you will know that we put a heavy focus on our policies and we're evaluating our policies and we are updating those policies. These have not been done yet. And I think it's really prudent, it was a good reminder to me, that before we move forward with some of the requests that we're getting, and additional ones are coming in as I speak now, that we have to shore up our policy first. And so I think it's a good idea that we're going to, we're going to pause for a moment. We're going to bring this back at our next meeting so that we can start to incorporate the discussion and questioning, so that when decisions are made for long-term projects that oftentimes outlast all of us, that we have a long-term plan in place and that we're thinking about, you know, the next kind of generation that's coming in. So we're, a little bit of a pause on this project right now, but I look forward to bringing this policy back at our next board meeting. Just quickly, because Alex talked about this, just Career Day could not be one of the, the most planned activity for the year. It is a spotlight event for Beverly Hills High School. It is an incredible way, as you've heard, to get the community partnerships that we have. And so we're going to be promoting this like crazy in the next couple of weeks. It's on March 15th, so we've got some additional time for some additional speakers. So we look forward to giving you an update on Career Day. Just a quick announcement for bullying. This is just a parent university that's going to be hosted at BVMS, Fabian Ramirez. Oh, I'm sorry, it's BVMS PTA at Horace Mann. And this is a speaker that is going to be speaking about bullying. We've talked before about bullying, ongoing issues with bullying, cyberbullying. And I do recommend that if people can attend, it would be great to see as many people in person that is showing up for these parent universities. There's a lot of great information there. I'm going to end with Kindness Week because it is not only Valentine's Day, but also Kindness Week. So thank you very much for your attention. We are doing a walk to school tomorrow. If you would like to come join us tomorrow morning, it's a way to kick off Kindness Week. It is tomorrow at 8:30. 8:30. And so Horace Mann and also Hawthorne. So they're walking from, Hawthorne walks from City Hall in the library. And I'm not sure where Horace Mann is. They're kind of everywhere. So it's just an overall walk to school. I will be joining one of those, I usually am at Hawthorne, so I'll probably find my way at Horace Mann. But a lot of people come out for this, so we'd like to see as many people as possible. And that is it.
Thank you, Dr. Breckie, to move things along, unless you have a comment or question for Dr. Breckie. Well... Anybody, anybody have a comment or question? You don't have to, it's okay.
I just would say that all the things you're talking about, Michael, what I'm really seeing as a theme here is collaboration, be it from collaborating with the students from eighth grade to ninth grade, collaborating with your professional development and really focusing on the math. I think that's really fantastic. In addition to that, the parents and the PTA and doing the Hawthorne Gala, it's just, it's really wonderful to see the collaboration that's going on throughout the district and, and all the areas that we've identified that we want to focus on this year. So it's, and also the shade structures. So really fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add?
I would just like to make a comment about how comprehensive and complete this presentation was. And if you think that we're sitting on our laurels here and not doing anything, we are busy and we are moving and there's a lot happening. And just tune in because every week we find so much more happening and thank you again.
No problem. I was trying to cut out some of the duplicates because Alex got to it, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to item 10A. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move for the approval of AMS proposal with piggy, piggybackable contract pricing for Bulldog Aid Wellness Center at BVMS.
I'll second.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Dr. Stern. Colleagues, are there questions for staff on this? Okay, I just wanted to ask one quick question because I had asked and I'm not sure of the process, but since we are approving the actual modular company now, is there going to be a point where we finalize a design?
Yes, and actually we have a DSA appointment on, forgive me, it might be March 12th or 13th, somewhere in there, for the design to be approved.
And while the design is a plan to be some sort of connection or congruency with BV itself, is there, is that taken under consideration? I don't want to just put a sore thumb and then...
Yeah, absolutely. We're, all the finishes on the building will be, will match the surrounding buildings along with the color scheme.
Okay, I just, I wanted to make sure that this doesn't cement anything today.
Oh, no.
All right, perfect, thank you. All right.
I have one question.
Yes, Mrs. Marcus?
Is this the same approximate that we approved to begin with, it's coming in at the same amount approximately?
Yeah, approximately, yes.
Okay, terrific. Thank you very much, colleagues. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, we're moving on to, thank you, Mr. Karat. Moving on to 11A, resolution?
I will move for the approval of Resolution 2022-2023-15, protecting our children from preventable gun violence.
I will second that motion and because my computer is not hooking up, I'm going to call on my vice president to read the resolution. So it's stated clearly.
Thank you. Resolution protecting our children from gun violence. Whereas school safety continues to be one of the Board of Education's highest priorities, and whereas shootings have become an all-too-frequent occurrence in America, in the first 29 days of the new year, there have been at least 44 mass shootings. And whereas unsecured guns pose a special risk to children and teenagers, and whereas mental health challenges have risen to an unprecedented level in the wake of the COVID-19, over 80% of child gun suicides involve a gun belonging to a parent or relative. And whereas 75% of children know where their parents' guns are kept, and most children will handle a gun if they find one, even if they have been taught not to. And whereas an estimated 4.6 million American children live in homes with at least one gun that is loaded and unlocked, and more than one-third of adolescents ages 13 to 17 say they could gain access in less than five minutes to a loaded firearm kept in the home. And whereas school districts are required to comply with California Education Code, Section 32280-9, which mandates the preparation of comprehensive school safety plans, and SB 906, which requires that schools warn and educate parents about the hazards of improper gun storage. And whereas these plans address violence prevention, emergency preparedness, and preventative measures of harm reduction, and whereas keeping students, teachers, staff safe from the threat of gun violence should be the responsibility of all adult stakeholders at all of our schools, and whereas the crisis of gun violence in our country necessitates a sustained, coordinated, and collaborative effort towards harm reduction. And whereas in order to continue with preventative measures to increase school safety, we must act now. Therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education of the Beverly Hills Unified School District and the superintendent will continue to work with community partners and public and private agencies to inform district parents of their duty to safely store firearms in their homes. The foregoing resolution was adopted by the governing board of the Beverly Hills Unified School District on the 14th day of February 2023.
Thank you, Dr. Stern. Colleagues, before we go to a vote, any comments or questions on this?
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Stern for bringing forth this resolution to the board. I really appreciate it and the resolution to support Ed Code 32280-9 as well as SP 906. I really believe that the safety of our, our children, of our teachers and our staff is our number one priority here at our school district. And I really support that we have a comprehensive security program for having violence prevention, emergency preparedness, and preventative measures for harm reduction. And the last thing that I would say is that it is also very much a shared responsibility for our community to keep all of our students and our, and our community safe and safe from the threat of gun violence. So I support this and again, thank you for bringing this forth.
Thank you. I'm not going to repeat what she just said, but I just really appreciate that you took the initiative on this one and keeping all our kids safe.
Same comments and thank you again.
Yeah, a few comments as well. To be clear, words and papers certainly don't keep our children and our staff safe from gunshots. But what it does do is at this point, and sadly today even, you know, we're, we had a moment of silence for just the most recent one, but it does keep us, keep our minds focused on the fact that there are some preventable things we can do. We will live with guns for a long time, but there are unique dangers among young people and their access to firearms. And I also want us to be resolved in our collaboration with the law enforcement partners. So Beverly Hills Police Department, the Fire Department, CSJA, NASDAQ, and our wonderful Executive Director of Security, Mark Mead. So as Ms. Wells had stated, it is a collaborative effort. Also up on the screen, I projected a nice pneumatic that a colleague shared with me that at least sort of helps us to remember some basic things to, when we think about gun safety, says SMART. So secure, so the S for secure, all guns in your home and vehicles, M, model, responsible behavior around guns, A is for ask, about the presence of unsecured guns in other homes, R, recognize the role of guns in suicide, especially among teenagers. T is tell your peers to be smart. And for more information, you can go to besmart4kids.org. But thank you all for your collaboration and the comments, and we did this as a community. And we will continue as a community to be vigilant and do our best for harm reduction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stern, and thank you for inviting the board to help build the resolution. I appreciate the team effort and of course, staff. Okay, with that said, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item B.
For the approval of the Resolution 2022-2023-14, the continuing author authority to hold virtual meetings pursuant to AB 361.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Item C.
I'll move for the approval of selection of candidates for the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Marcus. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Discussion time. Yes? Yeah, it was, the ballot was as is. Yeah. Understood. Okay. Board Liaison to Wreck and Parks Commission. I believe this was a question asked, brought to us by the city correctly? Correct? And in digging a little bit into it, I did discover that the liaison does hold their meetings when we hold our meetings, which is the reason why we have not had a liaison to that particular commission. So we can carry the conversation on from there.
I saw your comments on that and I'm happy to participate as a liaison to attend on the, for the meetings that are not during our meetings on the Tuesday. So as long as we clarify that we wouldn't be able to be there during the times that we have our board meetings, I would love to be the liaison for that.
Okay, colleagues, does anybody have any other thoughts? Thank you for, for offering, Mrs. Wells.
For other committees, we did two. Are we doing two, one?
Most, most of our liaisons to the commissions are one. We have one person on those. There's other committees where there's two, but not to the city liaisons. Those are usually one, except for the, the JPA.
Right. I know that when we talked about the human relations and health and sa, health and safety, you talked about sharing that. And I'm happy to share this with anyone else that would like to do it.
Unless they move their meetings, this is going to be a real short trip, so.
Well, just as a backup.
It's fine, it's, it's fine. I don't want to...
Just to create the opportunity.
And I thought, was that worked out between the other commissions or you guys? No, okay. All right. Like I said, if anybody else would like to be like a, another liaison, it's fine, but I don't imagine there will be much to, to do unless they, they contact you by, you know, email and, and go that way.
Great. Since I've got the three kids who really use parks and racks, and I think I'm in touch with a lot of families, and I'm always asking for a little bit more, I would love to join you.
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. All right, does anybody have any issues with that? Objections? Okay. Ms. Krausauer, I guess you can report that Mrs. Wells and Mrs. Manicherry will be our liaisons and, and will attend meetings if they're not scheduled during our own meeting time.
In response to the other question about the health and safety and human relations, I personally had thought about this and just talked it over with Dr. Stern. And in, in being able to be consistent, I thought in order, in sharing one week on, one week, one month off, I didn't think that that was really something that I would enjoy doing, and I felt that I would like to be able to stay with just one committee. And in addition that because Dr. Stern's schedule doesn't allow her to go to the meetings, she does them virtually, I do them in person. And so it would have been like a constant changing of in-person and one in Zoom and then a different person and so on. So we did try to work it out that I would stay with one. I'd be happy to change to the other one permanently and, and, but I think it would be easier if we kept consistency to the liaison committees.
Dr. Stern, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you decide on which one you're each going to tackle?
Yep.
Yep.
Will you like to let Ms. Krausauer know?
Health and safety. And Dr. Stern is going to be doing...
Human Relations Commission.
Okay. Do we have that, Ms. Krausauer? Thank you so much. Okay, thank you for stepping up to liaison to the, the Ghost Commission that we will never see, I guess. Okay. Discussion, before we start the discussion, we do have public comments on this particular item, so I'm going to go to the public comment first on these items before the board has their discussion. We'll start with, is there a Bonnie Silverstein on Zoom? I don't have a Linda. Is she doing? 11A? Okay, then we will go to Linda on Zoom. Make sure you unmute. There you go.
Yeah, I just did. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It is, it's actually a pleasure to be in your company this evening and thank you for doing what you do. First, I would like to share my deep appreciation for truly helping our community to feel heard and feel seen, and also for giving us an opportunity tonight to be able to achieve representation in our educational system. The city, we all know, has welcomed us, has welcomed me when I first attended Beverly Hills High School as a high school student in 97. And we, we are most grateful to feel at home here. Now, although many of us do live in Beverly Hills, as you may know, many of the community members have sought a different safe space, shall we say, for our identities in private schools, which are not always within everyone's means. Although I myself am an absolute advocate for public schools, because I only attended public schools... Although I myself am an absolute advocate for public schools, because I only attended public schools myself from high school all the way to graduate school. So now, tonight is about implementing the Hebrew language in the middle school program. And I truly believe that it will not only help retain our students and our children, but it will also help many of our members sort of back into the community schools. Now, what's interesting is that Hebrew is the only language that is offered in high school, but it's not offered in in middle school. I myself happen to speak seven languages, and the middle school age is an incredibly crucial time for language development as well. I started learning many of these languages between the age of nine and thirteen, which is actually also deemed to be a very sensitive period for language development. Many of the students that would have otherwise loved to learn this language in middle school, because it's also important to their identities, would have to resort spending, you know, hours during the week dedicating time outside of the school in able to in order to fulfill this particular need. So this could be easily resolved by offering this gateway to Hebrew in the middle school. It would certainly help these kids feel represented in an era where it is important to remember our identity, our heritage. It would validate our community building. It would serve equity balance and establish a gateway to the only foreign language that is currently not being offered in in high school, in middle school. So just to conclude and not to take more of your time, implementing Hebrew language would simply make such a fundamental difference in in these children's lives, and we humbly and kindly ask you to vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Linda. In person, I have Elizabeth Sarodi here. Thank you. You'll have three minutes. Come up, please. And is there a Nadine here? Are you speaking on this topic or something else?
I'm talking about language, but not specifically Hebrew.
Okay, so we'll.
I don't know where you wanna put me, but.
Well, you'll go after our Hebrew discussion, so the board will discuss this particular item on the agenda, and then I have public comment. Thank you.
As a Hawthorne alum, and I vividly remember my mom sending me to Beverly Vista once a week to learn Hebrew with the teacher that held classes after school. When my mom first signed me up, I thought I would be the only student interested in this after-school activity. After the first two sessions, this class quickly grew to be about thirty students. Although I'm saddened to see that the same after-school program no longer exists, I'm hopeful to add it to our future foreign language program. Our children would benefit tremendously from having Hebrew offered as a second language instead of speaking countless instead of spending countless hours taking them to Hebrew classes after a long school day. This takes away time that could be spent on other extracurricular activities that focus on music, art, and sports. Taking these Hebrew courses in middle school would also be a wonderful prelude to the Hebrew course already offered in high school. For the past eighteen years, I've sent all my children to private Jewish day school. This is my first year sending my daughter to public school, because she insisted on wanting a change. So far, I've had an amazing experience at Hawthorne. The only thing I truly believe my daughter is lacking are the Hebrew classes my other children had during their middle school experience. I have a lot of family and friends that are debating on taking their kids out of of private into public school as well. I'm sure if they knew that Beverly Hills Unified School District offers Hebrew as a second language in middle school, they would be more inclined to joining. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Okay, since there's no other public comment on this particular issue, we can now address the issue amongst ourselves. I will defer down to Ms. Button over there.
Okay, so my friends can definitely tell you that I'm definitely one of the biggest advocates of the foreign language department. I'm currently a student in the A P French class, and I've been doing French since eighth grade, and I took Spanish for one year before that. And my friends will tell you, I talk about French class all the time. And I think that learning a second language, especially for me, someone who's who's who only speaks one language at home, only I only know English, I was always jealous of people who could speak more than one language, and I feel like I know very few people who only speak one language, but the people that I do are very like they really want to learn another language. And I think that there are just so many benefits of being able to speak another language, and if that can start earlier, and especially if if, you know, students are interested in taking Hebrew, which I think there's clearly a population of students who are, that that's amazing. And that especially since it's offered in high school, that it should be offered in the middle school. But I will say that one thing I think that needs to be paid attention to is that the gap between the amount of students who are in the Level One and Two classes versus the students who are in the A P classes is a huge difference. There's a huge drop. And I think that that should just be considered when adding another class, because just like encourage students to keep going with it, because like taking it for one or two years is not gonna be as effective as taking it. Yeah.
Thank you very much, Alex. Mrs. Wells?
Did you?
What did you? You are more than welcome to give it. I was not on my list, so I apologize. It's it's okay. Would you still like to speak? Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak. I wanted to. I want to thank everyone for letting me speak. I am a resident and longtime Californian. I was born and raised here. I grew up on the West Side in Venice and swam, so I swam against Beverly, and I've been admiring the school. I want to thank you guys for all the tireless work you do and how you're constantly updating the school to make it representative of what's happening in the world today. We're really appreciative of it. And I wanted to say that I'm really excited when I heard about having Hebrew in the middle school, because I am mixed. My mom is from North Africa, and my dad is Eastern European. So I see that there's a lot of diversity in our community, and in all of the schools, there's a lot of people who are speaking Hebrew, whether they're Israeli or from another area. And I think it's a wonderful addition to have that brought into the curriculum. I know as I don't want to double, but I know a lot of people that are currently in private school that live in Beverly Hills that are not they're not happy there, but they're looking for the community that they sought out there. And this is my first year with my daughter at Hawthorne. I have a special needs student that's been in the district since he was three. But having a typical child here, I'm very impressed, and I'm really happy to say that the community that she left is more so represented here. And I've been seeing Rochelle Marcus, because my children went to school where Rochelle Marcus was cutting tuna in the Sisterhood since my sixteen-year-old was nine months old. So I just want to say that just being able to see all of the updates and knowing that this could be an option where they would have the advantage of starting in middle school like French and Spanish and being able to move up. And also, I know that a lot of the basis is on higher education, and I know that the Columbia J T S program is a gateway that people do when they go to college applications. So Columbia J T S, they are very accepting to see that Hebrew is on their advanced Hebrew, even though we don't have an A P Hebrew test. So I'm just hoping that we can, you know, move in that direction, and I would love to see it brought on. And thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry about the oversight in the listing on the comments. Mrs. Wells?
Well, I'd like to thank everyone that spoke for public comment and shared your your thoughts about this. And as well, thank you for the compliments about our school district. I really appreciate that. I absolutely think that, especially since we offer this in the high school, that it would be important to have this in the middle school. I guess the question really becomes, how many students do we think project that we will have immediately and into the future? And whether or not we're able to find a qualified teacher to teach that? And at a minimum, I would recommend that we offer it as after-school programming.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments that we did receive and also those who are in person. You know, as a student who went through Beverly Hills Unified School District, I started to learn Spanish from the sixth grade. And had I begun, actually, I recall beginning Spanish and then getting to high school and Hebrew being offered and kind of saying to myself, oh, shoot, if I had known, then maybe I would have gone in this direction. And so I think what will happen is that it's just a great thing to offer a greater variety of languages for the children to choose from. And knowing that they can take it starting from sixth grade and they don't have to change course when they're in, you know, high school is a great thing. I had the pleasure of speaking with Mr. Seaman before the session, and he did confirm to me that Hebrew is a U C-approved and a college-approved language. And so it, you know, to have this be one of the pathways moving forward and to know that it's gonna take the kids somewhere is, I think, you know, makes it even more valuable. I would be interested, you know, if you want to share a little bit that we have had a challenge in finding instructors for this program. And so I just want the community to be aware that should we vote for it tonight, it's something that would be developed. Excuse me, or eventually it's something that would have to be developed. And so the intention would be there, but then it also would require some work on the district's part to actually make it happen. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, everyone, and also thank you to those that spoke as well. The great part is is we are one of the few educational public educational institutions across the United States that actually offers a robust Hebrew program. And just for clarity for the communication for the community themselves, we do offer five levels of Hebrew, which is also unique, where we do not have an advanced placement course. But we have worked about four and a half years ago to create an A P-like course. We call it Hebrew and Literature. So that's for that fifth-year student. So if we were to move this into the middle school, we would have a fifth course for the students as they enter, if they're to enter from middle school into, say, Hebrew Two as a freshman, all the way up to Hebrew and Literature. So I just want to clarify that piece right off the bat, is we do have five layers already being offered at the high school. To say that to find a teacher is a struggle, that's understatement a little bit. We had a teacher that taught here for close to, I think, thirty thirty-something years. I was able to accept this position in twenty seventeen. That first day, that teacher had met with me and said, I may be looking to retire. We had went out, and I'm gonna be honest, four years consecutively to try to find a Hebrew teacher qualified to be able to teach at the high school. She actually kept, yeah, stayed for us until close till twenty twenty. But again, we will open that up, you know, that'll be, again, our problem to be able to own and work through. It's a great challenge, but it is definitely a difficult challenge. I will say that. Our current Hebrew teacher does have a full caseload. So one of the questions that could be asked is could that current Hebrew teacher also teach in the middle school? And that answer would be no. Right now, we do have a hundred and three students that are within the four layers, French, Hebrew, one, two, three, and four at the high school. So we would not have the flexibility in our current Hebrew teacher's schedule to be able to allow her to be able to teach at both campuses. I'm just throwing out some information. And I'll stand here too to field any other.
Okay. Anything else, Judy?
No, I just knew you could say it so much better than I could.
Rochelle. I, of course, know that everybody knows that I'm in favor of this and that I was able to finally get it on the program tonight and as a discussion item. I have a funny feeling that we may have some parent out there that can teach and maybe could be credentialed and can do it like on a part-time basis to fit it into their schedule during the day, where they could do like a two-fifths or something like that, where it would make it possible to have someone come in and teach the class. I'm convinced we can find somebody out there. And I truly feel that this would be another layer that we could offer the kids in the middle school. And I honestly believe that we have parents out there that, once they see that this is happening, might bring their kids back from the private schools. I think it might happen. So for these reasons, I I really hope that we can get this program up and going by next fall. I would hope so.
Can I add something to that, Ms. Marcus? My emails, D S E E M. If you can teach Hebrew, I'm saying, because you always want to be able to create a bench. Like, I, we're always looking for opportunities for those people that could be credentialed in Hebrew to bring them on for other places and facets and stuff too, so just not the classroom.
Right. And apparently you're running H R now, too.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
Collaboratively, we are on the same page.
Mrs. Marcus, we're counting on you.
That brings up an interesting point, though. If you have a credential person who is a teacher, a credential teacher like myself, who sat in on the class and you had a teacher who could teach the subject, can you do that?
The person of record for the grade would have to be the person that holds the credential, so we would not be able to do that.
Just trying to think outside the box.
No, a hundred percent.
Dr. Stern?
No idea is a bad idea.
I think one element, though, we had to remember when languages are taught in the schools is that, you know, language is a code, but what makes it rich and memorable for students, of course, is the cultural is the culture behind it. So I am sure there are people who speak Hebrew out there who could probably teach the code. But I think part of the challenge, and I would hope that we're charged with this challenge, is to find an educator who also can can braid it into the culture behind it, because that is, you know, the new practice, like with Spanish and French, is that it's not just we're learning a language. How do you say, where's the bus stop? But it's looking at the whole picture, and that's what's gonna make it resonate with the kids. So I can see that it's a multi-pronged challenge. There's the credentialing issue. There's availability. But there's also someone who can communicate this to kids in a way that makes it culturally rich, because that's really how it's going to, you know, score a home run, so.
Thank you very much. Okay, a couple of quick questions. And the vibe from the board is that we're giving direction to move forward in some capacity and bring this back to us. So that'll be the direction, but I do want to get these questions answered. Is there a middle school curriculum for Hebrew that exists?
So we have, three years ago, the Hebrew curriculum that we did adopt, because that adoption was hundreds and hundreds of years old. It does have a component where we would start to separate, and just to kind of explain the world language into the middle schools, we take the Spanish one, and we take Spanish one fall semester and stretch it out for the middle school. So we would do the same thing with Hebrew. So we already have the curriculum. What we would do is work on scope and sequence, pacing guides, yes.
Okay, so the answer is yes. Thank you. I love how you take the scenic route on those. It's great. But effect on budget will be a consideration. I'd like to know what we're looking at now. If, like my colleague suggested, maybe we don't need a five fifths, we can do it in two fifths. That should have minimal effect, but I still want to understand that. And then all of my colleagues have brought up, can we find someone qualified to teach it? And finally, how will the addition of a class like this affect the other languages and electives in the middle school? And I just want to know if it'll have a sort of ripple effect that we're not understanding tonight that then we may have to do triage on, and I don't want to have to do triage. So if it's something that we can slip in nicely, it'll be supported. It won't really affect the overall programming or whatever in the school. Great. But if we look at it closely and realize that this will send shockwaves, you know, we have to reconsider that, so.
You know, one thing I want to say is, because I've done this before where we've added a language. You know, it's finding out interest for sure, but then it's also, you know, that you're actually signing up as well, because there are choices for students, and so it, you know, for us to determine like what the job looks like as far as the F T E, it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have to really find out not only who's interested, because you can be interested and then you don't sign up for it. So and we just have to be really careful that that's two different distinctions that we have to make really clear. Because for a lot of our middle school students, they're in an environment where they have forty-four elective choices. So it, so I want to be, do you know what I'm saying? It's it's really attractive to a lot of people, because they will have to make a choice in their elective area. So I think, and that's, you know, our problem. So I think, and that's, you know, our problem, it's our job, our challenge, again, to find out the interest level and who will sign up.
And in middle school right now, correct me if I'm wrong, foreign language is an elective? Or is it required?
It's an elective.
Exactly.
And we do not have a hundred percent participation in either Spanish or French, so some students do wait until they get to high school to fulfill those two-year requirements. The middle school allows for them to take one year of the two-year high school requirement during the middle school, as long as they take the full three years, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And just to piggyback off Dr. Bregge, from an expectation as well as we, for this discussion, as an implementation piece that we have to recall, is all of a sudden, if we offer Hebrew in the fall of twenty-three, we would only be able to offer it to our sixth and seventh grade students. So that is not, and wouldn't be an option for our eighth-grade students, because what we would be doing is placing them back into the exact same course as if, as a freshman. So logistically, in curriculum and scope and sequence, they, we would only be speaking about the incoming sixth grade and the current sixth-grade class.
Okay.
That would be an option for. The current seventh-grade class going into eighth grade, this would not be an option for, if we were to move in that direction.
So, I mean, I'm hearing clear direction from my colleagues to bring this back to us with some of these questions answered that we have. I guess we would have to move on it quickly, because I know we're looking at choice elections already, right, for next year?
Correct. Yep, we're already, middle school is already about to start, we're almost finished with high school.
Okay. So this would be something we'd really want to get on immediately, if not, obviously, we would look at the following year. So colleagues, any other questions or concerns? Okay. Thank you. You guys have clear direction?
Yes.
Okay. I did want to point out a couple of things. I did appreciate, there were some public comments made or comments of the board on this regarding the fact that there, we have other foreign languages with pathways in middle school and not this one. I think that's a very sound logical argument for this, and also, for those, until we get something in place, there's a wonderful app called Duolingo, if you're not aware of it. I'm learning Italian on it right now, just because I want to, but it's one of those wonderful pieces of software that you can carry around with you wherever you go and challenge yourself and learn a new language. So if people are really wanting to learn any language, Hebrew, whatever it is, you can look at that app. There's a free, there's a free version and a paid version, so just, just as a helpful hint. Yes?
I'm already receiving texts with Hebrew teacher names, so I'll send them along. You got it.
That's awesome.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we have one more public comment before we wrap up. Nadine? Thank you. And I just, I want to ask, was Victoria here? Did she show up as, no? Okay, thank you. You have three, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Nadine.
Mic down, so...
Yeah, thank you. Okay, I don't know if I can, but I can just hold it.
No, we can, we'll take care of it. No need to be uncomfortable up there.
Hi, okay. So thank you all. I'm actually an alumni of the school district. I graduated from El Rodeo and Beverly High. I'm now a parent. My son is in first grade at Horace Mann, and my daughter will be starting kindergarten next year. And I actually came to talk about language education in general, not Hebrew specifically. My children were both at a preschool that offered Mandarin immersion and Spanish immersion programs. So my daughter's learning both and about to go into kindergarten where she's not going to have any language for six or seven years until she gets to middle school. My son and I are going to Chinese school on Saturdays. I'm also on a three-hundred-day streak right now on Duolingo. I had the privilege of being the child of immigrants, so in my household when I was growing up, we spoke Arabic and Hebrew at home. And then I learned Spanish at El Rodeo in seventh grade. At the time, it was seventh and eighth grade, and it was not an elective, it was a requirement, which was awesome, because I got credits, I got college credits for it that I didn't have to complete when I went to college. I guess I just wanted to bring to the table or discuss and see how I could help facilitate getting language at a younger age for our kids, because I have friends whose children go to LA Unified and Santa Monica School District. Both of those school districts have language immersion programs starting significantly younger, like kindergarten. And actually, Venice High School and Santa Monica High School both offer Mandarin programs at the high school level. So by the way, I'm not averse to Hebrew. I think Hebrew is a great language, it's one of the ones that I can actually write and read, which is, I can't say the same for other languages for. But I guess I just wanted to see what the process is, because I think, you know, I actually am a scientist, but I feel that learning language and the humanities has really molded my mind in a way that opens you up to learning so many new things. I think that language helps with pattern recognition, it helps you understand and be able to process tones, and it really can enhance the way that a child's brain develops. So I just wanted to sort of put that out there and see how I could help facilitate that. And I'm playing a longer game, like, I don't expect this to happen tomorrow or even next year, but I would love to see some, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we could, since it's not, that's not on the agenda tonight, we could put that on for future discussion. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. And just for some history, earlier on, probably in the twenty, I don't know, maybe twenty, thirteen, fourteen, there were conversations about doing a immersion, Spanish immersion in the district. It never really came to fruition, but it was talked about. Okay, communication from board members and meeting reports.
I don't have any meetings to report. In terms of just comments, I would say that around the discussion around offering language at the schools, we also had parents that came this past year and within the last six months, I believe, that asked, requested for Mandarin. So I think it's definitely worth having this discussion about how we can offer more language for the younger students and also considering how we can offer it in our after-school programming.
Thank you so much. I, we had colds, ear infections, and other stuff going on in my house, so I didn't really attend too many BHUSD events the last couple of weeks, but I did get better for the gala that Hawthorne PTA put on, and it just was overwhelmingly fantastic. And, you know, I'm so appreciative for PTA and all that they did at Hawthorne, but really, at all of our schools, there's just such a vibe and a buzz. Our kids are making it to CIF, we're hearing about it, there's so much enthusiasm, the dance company I heard was amazing. So just thank you to everybody for all the effort and this incredible sense of normalcy and energy. It's something that so many parents have commented to me about in the last couple of weeks, and I took note of it myself, so I just hope that this is the beginning of the rest for us. Thank you.
I'm going to keep my me, I didn't have any meetings to attend during the last couple of weeks, probably next time I'll have a few more to report on, but I didn't have any. But I happen to be a person who's been around a while, and I'd like to get a chance just to address something that once was called FLESS. And I don't know that my friends in the audience know about FLESS, it was called Foreign Language in the Elementary School. And that was, and I know because my cousin was one of the beginners of the program. She went from kindergarten, as they progressed every year up through sixth, fifth grade, then they, of course, could take foreign language in the sixth grade as a class, Spanish. But there was a French teacher and a Spanish teacher that went from school to school and introduced, they had two, four teachers, and they were, they divided between Horace Mann, El Rodeo, and Beverly Vista. And I have to tell you, the kids were learning to speak from kindergarten up, they had a choice of Spanish or for French. So I do know the value of that, and it's something that maybe we could, in some way, bring that back in one form or another for the kids to experience, and I, and so I wanted to mention that. And I just wanted to say that I want to wish everybody a Happy Valentine's Day, and I would have loved to have gone to the gala, but nobody asked me.
Well, you're going to be my date next year. I need...
Nobody asked.
No, there wasn't an email. It was a calendar mail.
I know, but I might rather you, I...
I want to be so adopted. I am officially asking you to be my date for the gala next year.
You needed a date.
Please mark it in your calendar. Thank you.
I'll be your date anytime.
I didn't attend any meetings, but I will be this Thursday, so next board meeting I will be reporting, and that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, colleagues. Be out of here by seven tonight, it's a wonderful thing. Hope everybody enjoys their evening. We will see you in a couple of weeks. I did want to mention all of the wonderful things that are, that we're all talking about tonight, don't happen in a vacuum, and it's great when the community constantly comes together. That being said, our very own Commissioner Krausauer is here with us tonight and is part of the Human Relations Commission, that is one of the sponsors of Kindness Week, is involved very much in Kindness Week. And the best thing to remember about Kindness Week is that it should not last only a week. So keep the kindness up all year. With that, I will adjourn the meeting. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)